Well, seven o'clock, we'll call the meeting to order. Any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, would somebody like to move the... I'll pick Lyle. Wish agenda is presented? Any discussion on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question those in favor. Let's carry it down this way. Thank you, moving on to correspondence. Town of Fox Creek... Well, sorry, I apologize, I put that wrong, please. Okay, sorry, the council meetings minutes of March 28th. Any errors, missions, questions? Okay, somebody wish to move? Barbara? Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question those in favor. Let's carry it down this way. Okay, now, moving on to correspondence. Town of Fox Creek.
Got a question on that one. So they're sending that letter, so realistically, they just want all the towns and municipalities to sign up and write a letter of concern, shall we say?
Yeah. Yeah, that's... And we've had, like, both the RCMP, the EMS.
Yeah.
I mean, and again, there's nothing wrong with this because it shows that there's lots of municipalities that are disappointed in the potential increases that we've seen.
Yeah, huge increases, yeah, in some cases, yeah.
Well, and again, I'm not sure exactly how much, you know, where the Utility Commission has power over some of those, I'm not sure. But, I mean, that's what it is, is to show support for their municipality.
So, are we gonna write a letter of support, or what do we do with that?
If we'd like to, we need a motion to...
I would make that motion.
Okay. Move to send a letter, something similar, like, we usually don't usually take it word for word, we usually change it a little bit, but it has the same intent, is that right? So Richard moves to send a letter, yeah, letter to where the Utilities Commission. Okay, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question those in favor. Let's carry it down this way. Moving on to the National Public Works Week. We get this every year. We can proclaim it, it's not a...
With the proclamation, all we do is, we post on the website and we send the proclamation back to, so that they can support it. We get a few of them throughout the year, we put it in there, it's going out to council if they'd like to or not.
I'm confused on the benefit of proclaiming it.
It just says that you as council, you proclaim that it's the Public Works Week and it raises awareness for the other Public Works Association, and supports your public works guys.
Or outside workers.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, it's their national company, or organization.
In the past councils proclaimed, like, lots of different, and I guess we haven't done proclamation with the new councilors. We do, traditionally, done several in the past, a lot of times we do the seniors week and those sort of things. They're not national holidays or anything, but they're a way of recognizing that you support by doing the proclamation. Really what the proclamation is, is that you claim it this week as this for that, to support that cause, and we post it on our website and send the letter back to the association saying that you guys support it, so. You will see a few of these as it, as they come around.
Do we need a motion to do that?
Yeah.
If you want to, I'll make the motion. What we do is, we just put that motion number on it and then Tom signs it, that's what we put on the website.
Okay. Laura?
Would that, I mean, it goes on our website, but would that also be in time to go, because not everybody goes on their website, with our, with our next utility statements?
Yeah, we could put it up in our next letter as well.
Just, I think, as much acknowledgement as you can get, because those guys do a lot for the community, and I think, for sure if it helps.
Okay, any other comments, questions? If not, we'll call the question those in favor. Let's carry it down this way. Yeah, thank you. Okay, the next one is just that report from South Grow, I mentioned, a little bit about it, I think, but anyway. It comes to mayors and reads, and then, so it quite often gets attached to something, something, so I'm not sure if I'd mention it or not, but Cole, you go to some of the South Grows, don't you, or?
We haven't had any in person, well, I guess we had the one that I wasn't able to attend, but there's another one coming up in a couple of weeks. Other than that, I've only had one meeting with them.
Okay, because you were on that committee to purchase that bus, weren't you?
Yeah, I had a lot to do with that.
Is, did they buy one, or? I was just kind of read here, it just says completed a bus pilot project.
As far as I know, it went through.
Oh, okay.
I actually haven't been updated on it, so, and since we haven't had a meeting, since I'm kind of in the dark.
Yeah, it just, I was just curious, because it just says, you know, outcomes new vehicle options sourced need file or buy it from Harrowd and Handy Bus Society.
And I actually, the committee I was on with them was for the charging stations.
Oh, you were on the, I apologize, I thought you were on the, I thought you were on EV bus.
No.
No, you were on the charging station.
Yeah.
Okay. Because they did get some funding for that, didn't they?
Yes.
Okay, any other questions on, on South Grow? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the SEWA, breaking notes and just to let you know that we did officially got that money.
The letter at the end is the letter that came, reached me before the last council meeting, and they asked us to hold it back until they had contacted all of their board, so shortly after.
So, I guess, maybe you'll comment on this here, committee meetings, or committee reports, but how, I guess with this money, how, how close is this to becoming a reality?
It's still quite a ways away.
Quite a ways.
Like, we'll take, it's approximately seventy thousand dollars that we've, out of this fund, to go towards hiring the engineer, which is HDR, to do the, we had three companies propose, a proposal, now, the seventy thousand dollars evaluated, so it's three, and gets it down to one, hopefully, and hopefully, we can sign a contract with one company, and then, then the process starts again, what they want and what. So we have to enter into non-disclosure agreement, and there's another one, Karen, what is called? Non-disclosure agreement, so that we don't disclose any information to either parties, or they won't disclose any of our information, but there's another one that we're, so of course, we have to hire a lawyer to draw those documents, you know?
Sure.
The lawyer that we've been using in the past is Brown, no, who did we used to use?
Oh, Brownlee.
Brownlee Frye, yeah, Brownlee Frye.
Yeah.
Well, however, Brownlee, no, anyway, you know, they're a thousand bucks, and I'm too much.
Okay, Brownlee is a, is a large law firm that represents a lot of municipalities. So if it gets beyond things that you can do with your lawyers and that, they will step in, but they're very expensive.
So anyway, so that's where most of that, those foundations will go to, but, but it isn't as, it's not, we're hoping that it would have been closer to shovel-ready, but it's far from shovel-ready, unfortunately.
When do they expect that?
Which money?
The, it'd be ready shovel-ready.
Again, it'll depend on how this negotiation goes, but it's been a slow, slow process. Any other comments on that? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to the National Police and Federation Call to Action. So again, this is...
And this one doesn't need a letter of support, but if you want to support it, we have to send them our logo, so that they can include it in the, in the information.
Again, theoretically, this doesn't sound very nice, but it's their union side of the, of the RCMP that are...
I knew there was something to the RCMP, yeah.
Yeah.
And they're just looking for all the municipalities that support keeping the RCMP and that moving forward, so the call to action, you would just make a motion if you wanted to, and then we would reply that council did a motion of support, and then, and include our logo with it. If you choose to do nothing, receive it for information, that's exactly what we'll do with it, just leave it as a, as an information item on the agenda.
I would like to make a motion.
Okay, to...
To sign it to the Call to Action.
Okay. Barbara moves to...
I'm not gonna vote, because I'm gonna vote against that one, because I'm unsure at this point whether...
So that's, that's why we get to vote.
So Barbara moves to support the letter to call the action. Okay, any other comments on Barbara's motion? Okay, if not, call the question those in favor. And opposed, it's tied, so it's a loss.
It's a loss.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we've done the correspondence, do we need a motion to...
We need to receive the South Grow and SEWA.
Oh, yes, okay, thank you. Since we've got two open, we just need to move correspondence for information. Okay, sorry, Richard? Okay, any discussion on Richard's motion? Hearing none, those in favor? Let's carry it down this way. Okay, thank you, now we'll move on to the Marcus Foundation request.
And so, many of you, I'm sure, read the agenda on Friday, it was updated, I received the letter at six o'clock this morning, so I got in and updated, so hopefully, everybody had a chance to read the letter. It's very straightforward, they're looking for land, if a project can move forward, council needs that, a discussion on what that land looks like, I added the property report, so that you can see which piece of property it is. It has been designated as, as public P1, which is, and of course, the signage is there, the intent of the town is for senior housing in that location, with the Marcus Foundation moving forward. There needs to be a conversation of, their request, obviously, is for the donation, on what you guys feel that value is, and even at this point, with them not knowing whether they're going ahead, or, and then just applying for grant funding and all of those things, you could accomplish their request by not turning the land over at this time, but actually just doing a letter of intent that says whatever those terms are that you will do.
So, in a letter of intent, so, let's say somebody came up, while they're planning or whatever they're doing, said, you know, I'd like that land, I want to build a no-folk section, can we, at that point, say we can discuss selling that to them, or would the intent be in the way of that?
You have to do the letter of intent with good faith.
Okay.
So, you know, if they were involved with that conversation, and...
Yeah.
You got a question?
This is where the, they put that disc golf course.
Yeah.
That's where all the cement pads were.
Yeah.
Yeah, and the reason why, reason why we did the disc golf there is, is the anticipation that it wasn't gonna be moving ahead right away, and they're just, just small pads and posts that we can just rip out and go if they have a project.
And the other thing, too, even that, if we do sign a letter of intent with them, which, you know, all of us, or majority of us, maybe it is a priority to move forward with some of this senior housing, is that it's not a, if it happened, even if they started it today, it's probably a good year way before, you know, again, shovel would go in the ground, if not longer, but, and that's exactly what Kim said, the advantage of disc golf, and the Kinsman Club knew about it, too, is that the potential, that they might have to move, but it's not an expensive, it's not an expensive move.
So, let's say in years' time, we want to go ahead, if they need, they can come to us and ask for what they need, right?
Correct.
And we have to give it, right?
No.
No?
Right now, they, now, right now, the request is for the donation, and it's to donate the land.
Yeah, I know that, but, let's go ahead to the buildings, I guess what I'm thinking is, just down the line here, what's our percentage of, of the cost that we would have to donate?
Again, we...
We don't know.
We don't know at all, and we don't know what percentage of, and again, they're just in the beginning stage of this, and that's partly why, you know, with us coming up with the land, either a donation or the land period, it helps move the project forward enough, so then they can go to the next step, and then, so they'll come back to us when there's some more concrete numbers.
Yeah.
Right at the moment, you know, I, I don't think it's fair to them, or to even us, to contemplate what kind of numbers are gonna be thrown around.
And I guess, the only thing I'd say is, you know, I just, I'm thinking to the future, just simply because at some point, they're gonna do it, and we have to come up with the money, so we have to kind of, I'm thinking we have to kind of keep that in the back of our heads, because that's gotta be there eventually.
Yeah.
So currently, the, the funding model, if, because they're a foundation, they do have requisition power, so they could, as we've seen before, they just ask for how much money they need, so, and that was one of the conversations, is the Marcus Foundation has the ability to borrow funds on their own.
Okay.
Having said that, their ability to be able to repay that fund is based on their partners, which is us, and our, our payment into the villages, the town, and the county are all on assessment basis, so as our assessment goes up and down, that's how our, how our share of their operations are. So at this point, when they're exploring funding, it would be impossible to tell you, you know, it, the difference between a one million dollar project and a twenty million dollar project, of how much we would have to pay, so.
Cole, Cole's, sorry, sorry.
So, I guess, once the, this goes through or whatnot, or say there is a building construct at some point, it's, because it's a foundation, it's probably not taxable.
That's right.
Okay.
Yeah, and then, there's very few, sorry, a lot of much of a question, but there's very few, like, even Extended Care, as an example, which is a privately owned corporation, they can ask for taxation exemptions, so even though, and even when we looked at private organizations, some of them would ask for that taxation exemption.
Sure.
And then that's up to us, but, but the foundation is definitely taxable.
This, I'm just, I should have guessed, looked before, but is there any other P1 options, like, public options?
Not of that size in our community, most of, most of our P1s are either parks, or, or private lots, or say the one downtown.
And, and again, going back a little bit, the history, too, Judy was on the council the day when the council of the day purchased that land, and I believe, and I don't want to put words into Judy's, or, but I believe that, you know, the philosophy was for that to be senior housing, partly because of the location of it compared to the hospital.
Yeah.
Now, in, in the past, we have asked, and the Marcus Foundation did look into other locations, you know, communities, you know, because they represent, you know, Arrowhead, Myrtle, Roman, Champion, Carnegie, they looked at other communities, they also looked at other locations in the town, and again, the question was asked of the foundation, you know, is this the best location for, in your eyes? They, they have done some questioning, like, even when we had, back in the day, again, when Florida sat on that committee, when we were looking for senior housing of a private enterprise, we had that piece of land, too, and they did look at other locations within town, because some of them, the companies would say, it's too far from downtown heart, but then, the advantage of it being so close to the hospital, and as, you know, most of us age, we use hospital facilities more than, so, they, they looked at all of those factors, and still felt that that property, majority of them looked at it and said it was a very positive location. So I guess what Kim is saying, that potentially, if we went into a letter of intent, to, is that, that would move, allow them to move the project forward without theoretically totally giving the land yet, until we know exactly what the question...
What, one of, sorry.
Oh, Richard, that's...
One more question, what would be the approximate worth of the 3.95 acres?
The assessed value is ninety thousand.
Is what, sorry?
Ninety thousand.
Let me see, oh, okay, there, okay, fine, in one eye, can't see out the other.
But I'm not sure what they paid for it, because there was some horse trading that went on, I believe, too, when Mrs. Fox, Fox owned it, there was a little bit of horse trading that went on.
There was some, they serviced the, the home site.
Yeah.
As part of that, so.
So, you know, it might not have been, we, we don't know exactly the dollar value of it, with, you know, how much was laid out, but again, you know, the, the council back then, and the previous council, and, you know, us also, in our strategic planning sessions, kind of put that we would support, you know, senior housing, and this is one way of supporting it, to say that, you know, we'd give a letter of intent.
Perfect, no doubt for senior housing, there's no doubt about that.
Well, and again, you know, like they said, Lori said in her letter, she said that, you know, they're looking at how they can make the facility more user-friendly to, for, she didn't say user-friendly, but use it to make it more user-friendly, accessible to, you know, because the hallways are narrow, so you can't get wheelchairs down the hallway, EMS has issues when they go through, or the fire department trying to get into the rooms and get them out, a patient out if they're in or out on that structure, it's not as friendly, and so, the facility wasn't designed for the type of use that we're, but anyway, go ahead.
So, one of the benefits of just entering into, into a letter of intent, rather than full-on commitment to turning over the land, is if you turn over the land at this stage, and something falls through with Marcus Foundation, you'd have to have the land transferred back, and, and/or they could keep it and sell it.
Yeah.
And because they are their own organization, now, we do have somebody that sits on their board that would hopefully voice those opinions of council, but by the letter of intent, we can support all of their applications and all that, and it allows them to move forward, and once they get into that moving forward, if, okay, now we can secure funding, now we can get this project designed and to a, to a shovel-ready, then they can also come back to the town with these requests of, okay, not only is it the land, we may need servicing, or how are we gonna get water and sewer to it, and if you have already turned it over, that kind of gets forgotten, you know, and now you have to do this, if it's all part of the parcel, it allows you to negotiate that all together, so that, again, all of the partners are aware of what everybody's putting into it.
And I think, you know, Judy's comments to Kim and I, too, and, is that, you know, this just allows them to move that next step forward, and that's why, you know, the request for a letter was asked, and Lori, being the chairperson, you know, had it drafted and sent over.
I think that we should try to accommodate them as best as we can, because there's a few members of our council that, I'm not gonna name any names.
I'm just thinking that, actually, but I like it.
I was gonna say, being the oldest member in the room, I, I know that theoretically I should be going to there before anybody else, but, so I appreciate your support, everyone. I would have picked on Judy, but she's not here, and I don't think it's fair that I pick on her without her being here.
She might be watching.
But anyway, yeah, so, if somebody's interested, Barbara?
I will.
Interested in creating a letter of intent?
Yeah.
Is that what you'd like with the motion?
So, just to make sure we have the wording, I did not write a motion for this, based on your conversation, you could make the motion that you direct administration to draft a letter of intent for the Marcus Foundation in order to establish the terms for which the land located at 90 Juniper Road can be transferred to Marcus Foundation, very clearly, should a new building development be formally approved.
Is that agreeable, we don't want to put words in anybody's mouth, but all of Kim does, he just added the first part on that, for...
Yep.
Okay, just gives Karen the ability to put that together.
Okay, any discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing none, I'll call the question those in favor. It's carried down this way. Thank you. And, okay, moving on to the CPO mutual aid agreement.
Yeah, you've all had a chance to read the report, hopefully, look through the agreement. I gave a brief update in my report last meeting, this was sent off to Nanton, the county is looking at it on April 20th, really, really what it does is allows coverage for extenuating circumstances, if someone's on vacation and we have an extraordinary file come up, say a dog attack where there is no RCMP around to deal with it, we could call, we could call the other officer in to start the file, and then, and then also, if we are having events from one community to the other, I know Counselor Smith brought it up at the last meeting, who's gonna pay for these costs, and it's discussed in there that we'll cover our own costs, and because any CPO leaving their jurisdiction needs the approval from their department head, we'll just keep track of who's coming and going, and making sure that we're, we're trying to keep equality there, you know, one officer isn't always going to another place. We've already been doing this quite a bit with, with the county already, so, the, the ask from Nanton is kind of where this all started, and it's really because they have one peace officer, they do not have an RCFT detachment in town anymore, so this was just a, how do we protect our peace officers and, and give that backup to them, so, this is kind of where it's at, obviously, Nanton approved it, and they're meeting on April 4th, and so, if, if you're in agreement with it, we would just sign the draft of the agreement that is attached, and hopefully, the county will prove it on the 20th, and then everybody would be good.
Okay, any, officer? Okay, would you entertain a motion if somebody wishes to make one? Okay, Laura?
I'll make the motion that council approves, approves the town will come into a mutual aid agreement with Florida County, the town of Nanton, for the purpose of providing support to the existing community peace officer program as presented and directs the CAO and geared to execute the survey, and we have the town of Oak.
Okay, thank you. Any question on Lyle's motion? Hearing none, we'll call the question those in favor. Hearing it's carried down this way. Okay, moving on to 5-3, early ICE request.
So, as everybody's had a chance to read through the report, Mayor Hawkins made a request for the ICE time for two weeks early, they made this request last year, and committed to a certain amount of time for that. It's been reviewed, what they're really asking for is council to look at this on a long-term basis, so, we were able to bring this up, so the council would be able to have a, actual costs of doing that, the actual costs for staffing, power, gas, and supplies for one month is just under twenty thousand dollars, so doing the two weeks is about a ten thousand dollar touch. Now, having said that, Stu did want me to bring up to council that there are, and there are ways to lower this cost, that we did do a look at five-day week rather than the seven-day, and that's based on last year's usage, out of the two weeks that they, we were open early, the Lakers were the only ones that used the ICE time on Saturday, and it was from seven till 10:00 one evening, and Friday, we closed out for our normal sheet maintenance from eight to, so there was no Friday usage until the 30th, or, no, sorry, there was none until the 1st for that two weeks, and there was only the one Saturday usage and no Sunday. So, Stu had suggested, rather than having two guys on, because we're open from, on the Saturday, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, we're open from seven o'clock until midnight, that because the kids will be in school in September and that, we could modify this to an eight-hour work week, only having one guy in there, and that way you could, for the two weeks extra, you could have one guy in there one week, one guy in there the next, still be able to utilize them on the crew, and then only have the Saturdays and Sundays as an eight-hour shift, so that would take this cost of that seven, five-day week down to eight thousand dollars, so reduce another thousand dollars for that.
So, we've done this one year?
No.
We did it last year, we've done it.
It's because of the Lakers originally, right?
Uh, no.
No, it's, it really, it's, it's varied throughout the years, about, it seems like about every second or third year, and really what it comes down to is, like they put in their letter, it makes it easier if they have that two weeks to get guys in to do the camps and, and the conditioning stuff, before they actually start in on doing their practices and, and building their teams. So, they do reach out to the skate club, the skate club will take time, believe it or not, the, the high school started their hockey program early last year, so they were actually pretty, they use the ICE...
The school doesn't pay anything?
They don't pay, but, well, for the purposes of this, it shows that we invoice, but we don't invoice anything, but... but we don't invoice anything. But, uh, one, two, three. So they used it for three spots in that.
Two.
In that two-year period.
Historically, that, going back years and years ago, when we had a junior B, we opened early. Um, when we had, uh, um, the Michigan team, that, um, the...
The Bisons.
The Bisons, we opened early. So when Kim says it depends on, this is just the two groups, the Hawks or the, uh, the Figure Skating Club and the, I don't know.
It, you know, just with what we were discussing last time with Rec, you know, it's just somewhere we're going to have to make some hard decisions. And, you know, I was looking at this, I look at the income versus the cost, and I, and I mean, it's a facility, it's going to cost you. And it's just that somewhere down the line, we got to do some cutting, I think. And that's my own personal view. Yeah. And I was reading what Stu was writing there about, you know, he's, he's up against it that time of year with manpower, you know, and, and, and he's, I looked at what he wrote and, and what he suggested, and I just, with everything we've been discussing, you know, I've just been thinking, how real important is this two weeks? And, you know, not having kids in hockey anymore and, and that. So I, I guess I'd kind of like to hear some comment from somebody that had kids in hockey.
The guys coaching hockey?
You too.
I'm torn on this, and I know, I know I'm not in the majority is. My thoughts are is the hockey season's long enough. I'm like, at the end, I'm waiting for it to be over. But I do know I'm in the minority of that thinking.
Yeah.
So I would bet, like, if minor hockey has approached us for this, most of the users are going to want it. Um, when I played, I liked it. But having said that, my kid, he goes early to Ocotoks to power ski, if we want to take him there too, there is other options, right? So very torn on this. I, from the town aspect, I would be reluctant to do it, but I do know I'll take heat for saying that too, right? So I don't know, any other comments?
Cool. Yeah, you, or it's, uh...
Nobody put your hands up.
Uh, my question is, um, so if the skate club and minor hockey between the two are paying three thousand dollars, the bottom line of it is, we're, it's an additional four thousand or five thousand approximately, if Stu can bring it down?
Depend, and it, it just depends on what, uh, what option council would like to go with. So if you go with the full two weeks, Saturdays and Sundays at full, it's going to cost nine thousand, nine hundred dollars. If you go the reduced, uh, with Saturday and Sunday full, it's eight thousand, nine hundred. If you would, uh, go down to, uh, five days with just eight hours of, in, in those days, it'll bring it down to eight thousand. There'd be seven thousand, nine hundred change.
So if they do...
So it would be about four thousand.
Okay, but if we do agree to say the full time for everything, it's looking at closer to seven thousand after they pay through three.
Close to six, yeah.
And, um, could I ask, do you think it would be a hundred participants or two hundred participants?
That's depending on...
Because I'm trying to think of the cost ratio per participant.
Depending on the teams, we have, uh, sorry, U eleven, U eighteen, U thirteen, U seven, uh, U fifteen, and then the Lakers plan. Of course, the Lakers aren't going to do early practices forever, but of course, without their arena, they're, they rely on us and other arenas too. So Lakers, minor hockey, full sheet, doesn't have which teams are there for those.
And, and...
Average, average team about twelve?
Well, you're looking fifteen on a team, but you get seven skaters for the, for the clinic, you know?
Well, the younger kids use it more.
Do they?
So when I coach...
Still even out there?
You kids, older kids, none of you.
You went to Connecticut.
And I wanted to strangle you all for it, but, um, the younger kids use it, and there's probably more numbers the younger you get.
So if you averaged fifteen per team, there's at least, uh...
I would say, I would say, I agree. Small teams have more players.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, you have a question?
Oh, I was just wondering if it's, if we have the ice in two weeks early, and he said, like, you usually take your kids to Ocotoks or whatever, or maybe with the, uh, sorry, I don't know much about figure skating, but if they, you said it going elsewhere early, if this is costing us money, but if it keeps people in town, do you think it'd be worth it to?
Yes, I do. Like I say, with it, uh, rather than going to Ocotoks, if we have the Vulcan option, it's less likely I'm stopping at Costco and supporting Mitchell, or, you know, there is that trickle-down effect. Um, yeah, I, I do see that benefit too, so.
Will, if you have a comment?
Um, it was just, if we decide to approve the two weeks or even the three weekdays and two weekends, then what are the, or how do we make sure we hold them to those thirty-two hours?
We can invoice it. That's, that's all we can do, is, uh, we, we invoice for their time.
Right.
And, and that's, that's a tough one, because when the ask always comes in, it's, well, we're going to use it for every day of it. But then, when they get into it, of course, school has just started all that, you know, school has just started all these things, we can't, and, and we saw it, they weren't using it on the weekends. That's where Stu said, hey, if I've got my guys sitting in there.
The weekend's not the use.
Their, the weekend wasn't the use, it's all weekdays now. It's all after, it's all after school. So that's, the, the majority of the bookings, uh, other than the school itself, all start at four-thirty. So.
Um, if we, if we were to agree to this, could we, um, have a possible agreement made with both, um, minor hockey and skate club to ensure that they would pay for the hours that are requested to offset the cost? And perhaps maybe it should just be Monday to Friday, um, as a preliminary, because Stu had mentioned, maybe this could be kind of a pilot project to see if it works or doesn't work?
Yeah, and, and really the pilot on the other side of it is just, uh, how many, you know, whether we have them in on Saturday and Sunday. So we, we've already done this several times there to start out, so, so we know what's involved in making the base of the cost.
If we don't do the weekends, then what are we losing?
Yeah, out of last year, uh, one Lakers practice.
So we, we don't do weekends?
Well, sorry, oh, sorry, we had, uh, skate club in on, uh, Sunday, the twenty-sixth, from two-thirty to sixth.
So I, I do like the idea of maybe working it into, um, the five days for the simple fact of, if we had a schedule from, say, the school, where they're bringing two classes over starting at, say, twelve to three or something, we could arrange our manpower on that too, right?
We don't need manpower for the school. They're self-supervised as part of our joint use, so we just hold.
We just have to make sure.
We just open the facility for them and they, so, uh, schools don't, uh, we don't have to supply staffing for them.
But then we don't get any funds from the, you know?
Have we had any, um, I guess, notification from the Lakers? I'm hearing that they're kicking tires, they lost their manager potentially, and they didn't have a whole lot of success last year. Um, so I, I don't know, I'd, I'd be curious if they are operational next year. Yeah, uh, last time I talked to Brad, he wasn't here. Yeah. Too early. And, and of course, they weren't included in this request. Okay, yeah. So this is just minor hockey, it's...
So in my opinion, I say it is worth it to do the, open the two weeks early, but I don't think it's worth it to have staff there on weekends at all.
Okay.
I think that we, say, you have these five days on the weekdays, you make your schedule, and you work it out with the skate club, and that's what they get. And then we're accommodating them, and we're not screwing ourselves, in my opinion.
So, uh, one of the things, the operational side for Saturday and Sunday, that can be done internally, uh, with that as based on this conversation. Uh, and, uh, the bigger side of this would be looking at, uh, the next question that they put forward, do you want to do this on a long-term basis? Uh, and that takes, and the reason why is we have it in right-in policy because this happened back and forth so many times that we never really knew up until, and I was, when I was public work for it, and I was the one that brought it to council, I said, I need a date because we would find out a week before they wanted the ice in, then their request would come to council, council would say yes, and you can't, you can't put the ice in in three days. And so we had to put it in, in policy that October first is the start date. And so if this is a long-term thing, then you also have to give direction to us to bring back that policy that September fifteenth is now the date.
Um, I would, I would say yes to that and changing the policy, but it would also be dependent upon both of the clubs utilizing ice, not just one or the other, and ensuring that they both start at that time, because otherwise it's only minor hockey using it, and it brings down the actual income for starting two weeks early. So I think it needs to be kind of a mutual agreement with the two organizations as well.
Okay, Lyle's got a question.
Would it be something there, if you want to go, well, you're the, you're the wordsmith, but if you do, uh, do this long-term but to be reviewed annually to make sure that, you know, it's still working for the skating club and for, for minor hockey, because maybe things will change and maybe hockey's not the thing anymore or something. But I mean, if we can...
And we could look at bringing a policy back that, uh, that allows for an ongoing September fifteenth, but on a modified schedule based on, uh, on input for research.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Yeah.
Before, uh, I'd hate to throw a monkey wrench into our philosophy. I, I like the discussion, it's been great, especially hearing both from Will and Cole, I've got kids, um, you know, Barbara, it hasn't been that many years since you had a kid in, in figure skating. Um, it's been years since I've had kids in figure skating or in, in this process, but the only thing I question on this too is that, um, do we want to, um, hold off on a decision tonight and, and, uh, visit with our partner, which is the county, because I know that they're not, you know, in the agreements that we're discussing, it's not a fifty-fifty total, but, you know, here's an opportunity where, you know, they might have, would like to have some input in, because potentially if it went, uh, you know, fifty percent of operating cost, then what we were doing is we're imposing a couple thousand or something dollars on the county, that they didn't have an opportunity to have input, which is something that, you know, has been a concern, that, again, I, I appreciate all the philosophy and discussions, but I just question, maybe it's something that we would, I, I know they want to know so they can plan for their AGM, what they're going to put out there, when they're starting, which I appreciate, but I also appreciate that we haven't, you know, had an opportunity to visit with our county members to see if this is something that they think is a good thing or a bad thing.
I think that's wise, that's a good point.
But, but again, I, I'm not, if you guys want to move forward tonight, I appreciate it. I just, I wasn't going to say anything, and then I thought, no, I can't sit here on my hands too long. Because we can, we can just table it to the next meeting and then try and meet with the county before, show them the letters of support and the cost factors and what it potentially could cost. And they might come back with no comment, or they might come back with positive or negative comments, but at least they've had an opportunity to see what we're trying to do.
Can we have a proposal written for the September fifteenth with modified schedule and send that with the county, so that we could have, we could actually just send this proposal?
Yeah.
Uh, with some notes about your discussion this evening?
I mean, it's been great discussion on it, and, you know, again, I, and, again, my kids, when they were involved in that stuff, they, a lot of them would love to have started earlier conditioning and for, you know, but then we had ring in going a couple of things that they participated in too, micros. But then again, you gotta remember, that's thirty years ago, twenty years ago, whereas Coles and Will and yours, Barbara, I mean, your daughters have just been out of it in the last few years, so.
I, I think it's smart, Tom, that's something I wasn't considering at all.
Yeah, I think it's wise.
Wise thought. But, you know, we, we could just table it for tonight?
Yeah.
And, and let them know that, you know, we'd like to, you know, discuss.
You could just direct administration to contact the county, uh, with this and then, um, to bring it back to the...
Sure. Is it, is that agreeable that we table?
Yeah.
Unfortunately, I'm not a big fan of making motions from the chair, but, um, if somebody else would like to make a table motion, I'd appreciate it.
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Richard? Most tabled and send the information out to the county. Okay. Any discussion on, I don't want to stop the discussion because, like I said, it's been good, but hearing none, I would call the question those in favor. It's Karen DeNando's thing. Okay, moving on to committee reports. Um, the first one that we've got is the Waste Commission. There has been a couple since, but unfortunately I have problems trying to get it to Karen electronically, so, but, uh, I kind of wish I had an idea. Okay, moving on. Any questions on that? Moving on to the Health and Wellness Foundation. Thank you, Barbara, for getting it to us. Do you guys usually meet on a monthly basis?
Yeah, um, it's usually the last, um, Wednesday every month.
Good.
February was canceled. I can't remember.
Yeah, it doesn't, I was just curious.
There was one that was canceled, I mean, same as February, so. And we just had one.
Okay, any discussion on the wellness? I think the next one is the Mayors and Reeves of March the fourth. Well, happy birthday.
Happy birthday there.
On March the fourth.
Twenty-two?
You were at a meeting, and some of those didn't...
I sent you a happy birthday.
Yeah, you did.
Okay, any discussion on those three reports? If not, I've entertained a motion to, uh, Richard? Any discussion on Richard's motion to file? Hearing none, we'll call the question those in favor. It's Karen DeNando's thing. Okay, moving on to council reports. Counselor Magnuson?
I was supposed to go to the South Grove Economic Development Summit in Carmengate on March the thirtieth, but, uh, my phone just blew up when I was busy doing my regular job that day, so of course I'm still on that one.
You weren't down on that, were you?
I was in Bathbridge, Champaign, I was all over.
Because I thought I met you, I was going down late.
No, probably.
Anyway. Sorry.
I didn't have any other meetings, but I have had, uh, lots of discussion with people coming into my office or on the phone. I even had a, uh, ex-member of the Legislative Assembly call me regarding the, uh, proposal up on Fairways Drive. And, um, there's been a bit of concern. I think there's a little bit of, um, education for people that will, just to learn about the, the proposal and the process. Um, I've tried to, you know, tell people that, you know, things aren't, like, done deal, there's steps to be done. First, regaining public consultation and that, and, uh, some people, yeah, we're just getting a little bit excited there, but I think, uh, I could tell them nobody noticed going out in, in the paper and I'm sure on social media and that, so people can know what's going on, and then they can put their, their inputs in. And I do think it is kind of exciting that we actually are getting people talking about something that they are listening. Apparently, the day after our council meeting, there was already gone through the Wispen Greetings Homeowners Association, a lot of talks. And that's all right.
Any questions for Lyle? Thank you. Moving on to Councilman.
I didn't have any meetings, but I did go up to that area and knock on a couple doors. The reason I knocked on a couple doors was simply to let them know what was proposed. And I said, I told them, I said, I voted to go forward for the simple reason, if I voted against it, it would stop, and you guys might all be for it. So I just went to about three houses, and, um, and I had to go to work, but I just kind of wanted to go up there and get a feel, and one was the very far end. And, uh, that was kind of negative. And I said, well, I would advise you this. And I said, well, I would advise you this, there's going to be a meeting coming, but I would think of the pros and cons. And I said that on both occasions. The next guy I went to was, I don't know, I really cared for that. But really, what harms are good? That was one of those head scratcher ones. And I just, I wanted to get a feel as to what people would think on that. And the next one, she was trying to hold her dog from biting me. So that was, that was a kind of a, just a quick conversation. But I just kind of want to get a feel for, I went up there to look. And I thought, well, that's interesting. There's some, just kind of looking at the layout out there. And I was kind of curious as to some thought there. So that, and I might knock on a few more doors just to, I want to get a feel for what people are thinking on this and that. And whether they're for it or against it. Like if straw poll right now is like fifty fifty, plus one biting dog. That's about it. But that's kind of what I did. And, but I haven't had any scheduled meetings until the twenty-first of this month.
Okay, any questions for Richard? If not, thank you. Moving on to councillor's night.
I haven't had any meetings since the last meeting. I have a CFH meeting coming up. I guess in two weeks. Have had some inquiries for the Fairways Drive Recreation. And there was some misinformation, like Laos said, people thought it was a done deal. And they just said that all it was, was us telling the administration to go forward with the rezoning, or planning the rezoning. Yeah, it's hard to judge where people are at with that, but I'm sure we're going to get lots of input once the, once we get past the first reading. So I'm excited for that.
Yeah.
And that's all you got.
Okay, any questions for Will? No, thank you. Councillor Brewer Coffee.
I had a meeting on March thirtieth for the Baltimore County Health and Wellness Foundation. And then the ad hoc for the egg society on April eighth. So, and I think.
Okay, any questions for Barbara? On that wellness, did you hear how the walk went?
They had quite a few participants. They were very excited to have Paul and Vicki from the meat market.
Right, yeah.
Cause he's had a double lung transplant. And he actually did the whole entire walk.
Oh, yeah.
So they were, they were absolutely thrilled to have it.
Well, that's great to hear.
I was in attendance for it. It was, it was a little chilly, but it was really cool moon that night. And I won it if it was a race.
There was a whole bunch of old school people.
And then I could walk for a week after.
You probably walked out your back door.
Yeah, she did.
Across.
Yeah, it was kind of a, it was a really neat function.
Okay, that's good. Sorry, anything else for Barbara?
And the annual one spring, I'm going to call it spring one, is coming up too. So if we have teams, you can always enter.
Okay, anything else? Okay, well, thank you. Councillor Dylan.
I had one meeting that I wasn't able to attend. It was an ad hoc meeting. I was cleaning seat that day. And when Herb Harder phones you to pick your seat up, you don't be hard party. So, yeah, I missed that, but Barb kind of filled me in. And actually Rod phoned me to kind of tell me what happened. He seemed very pleased, so, yeah, that was about it. I've also had a few people discuss the proposal for the trailer park for the gated community. Basically, I've told them that we don't have all the details at this point because we don't know, there's lots still to be determined. And I don't have an opinion on it as of yet. But like Richard and them, I've already in favor to hear out what, what kind of agreements can be made. And then I guess make the decision after that. But I'm mixed review. Some people think you'd be nuts not to do it. And people think you'd be nuts to do it. So it's going to be kind of an interesting debate perhaps. But I'm kind of happy with the, that's got the community talking. Like everybody seems to be involved in it. I, that aspect of it I like, so that's about it.
Okay, any questions for them? Thank you. For me, I had a solid waste budget meeting. We've had quite a go around with the budget. And so finally was ratified. And this is an example where unfortunately, we as a municipality, because it's the, they're like the Marcus Foundation or the Water Commission, their commission, then they have requisitioning power. And they have increased their budget for this year, which we, so Kim and I had a bit of a discussion after when Vic sent it in and Kim went out and visited Vic to go over, you know, what was proposed in the new budget. But it was finally ratified.
So I told everybody with the increases.
Sure.
Thirty thousand. So it was something that we didn't account for. So we've, we've been working on getting that. That's why I went out to visit Vic, just to make sure that nothing else unexpected is going to happen this year. So when we're putting the final budget together for you guys, we can live around because it was thirty thousand different than what we were giving in December.
And then again.
What's the reason?
What's the reason? Well, the board did approve to give a two percent increase to wages.
Yeah.
Then again, more or less Barbara's been asking us to look at, do we have enough money in our electrical bill, our gas bills and our physical gas and diesel? And so the board approved increases in all of those areas. So unfortunately, we should have had this back in November so that we could have put it into our budget. But unfortunately, the Waste Authority didn't.
Who runs that Waste Authority?
Who runs it? Who chairs it?
Yeah, that's what I should say. Who chairs it?
It's Tom Grant. And I'm disappointed that there were sums. But there was even like quite a lengthy discussions that happened about the Waste Authority on reserves. Because we have some members that believe that we should be having reserves. And unfortunately, in my philosophy, you only have reserves when you have money. If you have debt, all you're going to do is have debt. And unfortunately, the Waste Authority is one that doesn't have much for money to put away for reserves. So they do live from hand to foot almost all the time. They have a little bit of money in reserves, but not a pile. But if you add the requests by some of the members to, you know, it would cripple some of us to create the reserves that they anticipate. But anyway, it was a fairly exciting discussion that went on.
So that's going to increase.
No, we've started working on that, making the adjustments.
So, yeah, once it comes back up for us, we have choices. We can, you know, turn around and do exactly what we had thought of in the past and put a rate payer in their garbage pickup. And which the garbage pickup did increase. It's the tipage and the transfer stations costs. Or we can do what we've done in the past, subsidize it with other funds, you know? And so that's up to council. But unfortunately, I have to apologize from the Waste Authority side is because, and especially to administration, you know, we should have had our act together and thought it done back in November.
Just to put counsel's mind at ease with it, the increase that you approved in the rates and fees by law in December covers the majority of the shortfall. But just the idea that we're not going to subsidize this year, we're still going to have to. So it really didn't, you know, there's still a little bit that we have to adjust in there. But it's not a panic, where are we going to get thirty?
But again, it's, there's an example where unfortunately, societies and, well, not so much societies, but commissions have that requisitioning power and we have the choice. But, you know, I can argue it back and forth, but unfortunately, I'm only one of seven, eight. I'm one of eight. The other one that I was at was Mayors and Reeves. That was on April first. It was an in-person one and, but it was supposed to be all in-person. But they, the MD of Tabor has an OWEL system. And they took it and set it up in their chambers at the Leftbridge County. And it worked great, unbelievably great. And they just plugged it in the wall, they plugged it in and dialed out. And it worked super. It was clear as a bell, the people that were on the other line. Matter of fact, the mayor from Leftbridge, he says, you know, we've had people from IT come in and they said it was going to cost six hundred thousand dollars to put in the system. This OWEL was a hundred or fifteen hundred dollars. And Tabor plugged it, brought it in, plugged it in the wall. The guy said, other than they, he had it sitting like about here. And so the people on that side of the room, they could hear on it as well. So he says, well, we went over, but it was, it was great.
Where do you get information on those things?
Pardon?
Where do you get information on those?
It's called an OWEL. That's all I know. But lots of municipalities have been buying them.
Community futures and are just going to go for like five hundred thousand dollars to get that kind of system.
It's exactly O W E L. It's a, and, you know, we can get the whole of Tabor, County of Tabor, they had one. And Carston County bought one and, you know, it worked great. But we had twenty-three people online and fifteen people in the meeting, you know? And that's, the twenty-three online was at the peak. So it, again, it was well attended. The, we had a delegation, or they talked about the Leftbridge Airport. It was originally run by a commission. And then it went to being run by the county of Leftbridge. The Leftbridge County turned it over to the city of Leftbridge who run it. And they've ran it since two thousand and nineteen. And so it's working relatively decent, you know, they're just going through growing pains. The advantage of going from a commission to the city is that they were able to get funding for some of the stuff that they haven't in the past. They also have two airlines that fly out of Leftbridge now is WestJet and Flare. Flare just started just the other day. And Flare is going to be flying down to the States, somewhere in the States.
Through Arizona.
I believe so. I think you're right, yeah. So anyway, so we had two MPs talk. Neither one of them were there, but they're, they're persons like Brendan McDonald and this Colleen. And the major thing from the MPs is the RCMP funding one. The CPR strike, you know, potential strike that was on, that was off and what it did. And that was major discussions under those. The MLAs were Nathan Newdorf and Grant Hunter. And most of their stuff they talked about was, you know, the budget that came through and funding that fell out of the budget process. And then there was a bit of a discussion on the carbon tax, the gas tax, the heating bills, election bills, funding for Stars and Halo, which was in the newspaper. If you got a chance to read it, that they've gotten increased. And then there's another helicopter somewhere else. There's Halo and Stars and another one. Anyway, all three of them got funding increased. They talked about this ATA conflict of interest that the government just passed. Before the ATA, if there was a conflict of interest, they still represented them as a union person, but they also represented the union against them. So they're breaking them, trying to break that up into two parts. The ATA is upset like crazy and so is the NDP. But the government and the, some of the teachers believe that it's the better process that, you know, the union, more or less who you pay dues into isn't fighting against you. Then when we talked about the Old Man Watershed, Shannon Frank discussed about the snowpack in the mountains is above normal. But because of the dry weather and the hotter weather, they're worried about that the snowpack will not last long enough. So it'll run out before the normal time. She also talked about the coal ban. And there's information on the website if you're interested in more. Like Lorna was one that brought some information on the coal ban. It was sparked by a letter from the mayor of High River. And, but there's lots of information on both the Old Mountain Watershed for the coal ban information. Oh, and the Highway Three, they've got approval to expand the Twin Highway Three. And they've got the land purchased. It's in the Grassy Lake area. So I don't know how many miles they're going to get done, but they're going to start on it this spring. So Twinning is going to go forward on both of those. Jim Willett spoke a little bit about the convention that was in, event that was in Carmengay. And it was very successful, well attended. And, oh, the one area two, yeah, that was about it for the Mayors and Reeves, I believe. But coming out of that meeting that I went to in Carmengay, the South Grove, it wasn't, it was a, it wasn't really a meeting. It was a seminar that they put on. They had two gentlemen spoke. One was from Pincher Creek and one was from Tabor. And they were on the energy consumption side, you know, like they did energy audits within those two areas. Anyway, the one guy said that they have us, they signed an agreement. And this is really important, I think, for the, for the water commission and the county. Cause county has two generators, like one at the county office and one at the fire hall. And the Waste Authority, I mean, the Water Commission has one out there. You can sign an agreement with ASO that if there's a brownout, they'll phone you. They'll pay you X amount bucks per month to be on standby. And then if there's potential brownout, what they do is they phone you and say, shed your power and go on your generator. And so then you flip your generators on. But I could be wrong in the numbers, but I wrote down, cause I was quite shocked, that Tabor, the town of Tabor gets thirty-five thousand dollars a year to have their generator on backup. And they never used it. They never ran it one hour and they got thirty-five thousand dollars. So I was thinking, the Waste Commission, or Water, Water Commission and the county and the county fire, at the fire hall, they could sign up those agreements. And it only happens if the power gets to that point where they start, have to get these people to start shedding. So all of a sudden, you just flip your breaker, your power goes off for seven to 10 seconds. And then all of a sudden, your generator is fired, nobody knows anything. And then they'll phone you back and say, flip it back on.
What was that, what was that called?
It was, it was an agreement with ASO.
ISO.
Or ISO.
ISO. How's ISO?
I S S.
I E?
I S, oh, I think, isn't it? Or it's got an L in it. I can find it.
The Energy Regulator. They're the ones if you put solar on your house, you have to approval from.
Yeah. Anyway, it really sounded neat. I mean, the other thing that Tabor did too is that they have a thing on their swimming pool where they, they run all their power by generator. And then they take the heat off, the heat exchanger off the generator to subsidize the heat on the pool. But they run their swimming pool twenty-four seven, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. So there's advantages for us to do it for such a short period of time that probably wouldn't be. And then the third one that they do is, has something to do with the arena. And in Pincher Creek, they're able to save thirty percent in operational costs on the arena. I don't remember exactly what the process was called, but they said that if you wanted to get ahold of them in Pincher Creek, this person or the guy from Tabor. And they were promoting that we should hire staff members to do this auditing. And then they apply for grants and do all that paperwork and all those applications. But Tabor, I believe, I think it's Pincher Creek and the MD of Pincher Creek went together to hire this person. But those three areas were really, I thought, were kind of interesting because, you know, most of us have generate, like those three in our community have generators just sitting there doing nothing, three hundred and sixty-five days a year generally. And they could be making money. So that was one thing I really gleaned from that. And that was about it on those. Again, when you're talking about the Fairways Drive or the proposal up in that area, I had an hour and a half discussion today with a great peer about it. It was very positive. There were six of us at the table and we were having this discussion. And one was more vocal than the others about it. But again, there is a bit of this no. But again, there is a bit of this knowledge, there's people out there that believe that it's a done deal, it's gonna happen. Exactly what everybody has talked about, that, you know, we moved it to the next step and then there'll be a first reading and if it goes through the first reading, then, then there's public hearings and that. But there is some misinformation that's out there, so if you get an opportunity to visit with them, I think it's great because, you know, I think most of us have more of an idea of what theoretically is being proposed than what some of that information that's out there on the street. And then I also had about a four-hour discussion with about seven people about the industrial subdivision. You know, asking us where we were, asking me where it was and how it was moving forward and on and on. And again, those are the people that I see in those areas. I, you know, you guys that are younger that have people on the recreational side or Barbara has something in the recreational side or you, you see or hear from those people, I generally don't.
I was just, sorry, I was just curious what the feedback is on that. I haven't received a whole lot of feedback on the industrial.
Well, the, the ones that I sat around with were asking us, when is it gonna happen? Because we need to do it yesterday. They were all positive. But again, they're all business people that I sat with and they're all pro doing something to increase our industrial income taxation wise, our footprint. So they're, they're all pro, there was not one that was anti in that, in that group. But again, they're, that's the type of group that I was sitting with when I had those discussions. But that one was about four hours long. The other one that was, there was a question on that was raised, and I've only heard it twice, is about our website that, you know, we need to do updating to our website. I personally only go onto portions of our website, I don't go to the, and, and because I know, and that's what I've said to some people too, is that really what you do need to do is you hire somebody to look at your website before you publish it too much and say, that knows nothing about Vulcan, nothing about websites and say, okay, you go on it and ask the questions because, you know, you only get the people that know all which button to push and where to look for stuff, designing it, and they're not the ones that are using it. You know, it's the, the Joe off the street that doesn't have a clue.
On that side, Recreation has just got their side of the website, just the whole finished, they've been updating there, so.
So anyway, that was the only ones, but those, so those are the ones that I, I only had the two meetings, there were three with solid waste and one with mayors and the V's and the rest was just other events that participated in. Is there any questions for me? Okay, hearing none, council reports a motion, law? Okay, to file. Counselor? Oops. Thank you very much, anybody have any question on the law's motion? Hearing none, call the question in favor and it's carrying an answer there. Okay, activity just.
So you've all had a chance to read through the report. The only one that we had completely finished is getting the strategic planning projects up on the website, obviously, the meeting with the Agricultural Society. I was able to do that, I'll talk about that in my actual report, report. And we are, I was able to meet with the county administrator on Thursday to review the industrial sewer servicing, so he's got a public agreement now and that's just gonna beat it up a little bit, but there wasn't, actually it was completely, maybe it was, it was really, there was just a couple wording things and it was really about the point of entry. Without seeing their plans, we don't know exactly where we can put a meter in. And so us putting in an agreement that says you have to put a meter in at the point of entry might be a lot more expensive if we could change the wording to say exclusively on the point of entry. So it could be a pipeline path, you know, half the back of the lift station or in the lift station, as long as there's no connections between. So that was really it, as far as the terms. He seemed very happy with that and I, I imagine he'll be taking it back to his council for discussion. And when that time comes, once they've beat it up, we'll bring it back here and beat it up some more. But it was, that was a very productive, so hopefully we'll be able to get that moved off the list here fairly quickly, the land use bylaw. Again, I'll talk about that a little bit more in my report, I've had some meetings with that and we're gonna be meeting the course to, to try to get that finalized, to get to council. Unless there's any other questions about anything else outstanding on there, that's.
Okay, hearing none, we want to see a report.
Okay, I'll just briefly go through the CAO. Yeah, you, you did all that chance to read it, so if there's something that I don't hit on here that you have questions about, please let me know. Met with the Ag Society president for the new proposal. He sat down and asked if we have the, if we could have another ad hoc committee meeting just to make sure everybody heard the same thing. And it's really based on, council had the discussion, the land will be available for a lease if some of the Ag Society would like to move forward with, we just kinda wanted to get their feelings of it. We sat down and discussed it, then we went through all of the, I guess, the negative things that'll go along with that, like, yes, we can lease you the land, but we're not the development authority on it, so we can't even approve a park bench out there. That will be the county that will have to do that. We discussed the access off of the highway, we discussed the restrictions that are gonna happen with development, anything close to the former, to the former dump sites. We talked about the stormwater mitigation and the ability not to be able to develop in that, in that pond area and what that'll look like. But then we talked about the positive things as well, like the location for sewer line, power being already on site, the availability of water through the water flow. And we went and we got done, they were very happy and I believe that they were leaving from this meeting and we're going directly to the county to talk to them to see about on the development, because again, we can't approve anything on that land, so that's why we've never had anything for development out there, so they were gonna go talk to them about that. So it was really positive, even with having to do all the, we can do this, but here's all the restrictions on our side, here's all the stumbling blocks that we signed, see with this. But then they're still very positive with, with how that went. We were able to, SEMA Plus was supposed to have everything back to us on Friday for the industrial subdivision, they had a delay with some of the service, with some survey stuff because they didn't, they didn't come out when the snow fell. So anyway, we're expecting that this week for, for the final plans. The MOU for the Peace Officer reviewed that, obviously, that we were able to get that to you guys for approval. Draft of the Recreation Proposal, which we'll talk about in camera. Met with the developer about public engagement for the proposal, so this kind of feeds back. Glad to hear that people are talking to you as well. We've only received one letter from somebody that is not in favor of it, but we totally, we replied that we'll put it on file and, and encourage them to take part in the public participation portion of that as well. And really it was based on, on property value, which is a question that we were hearing an awful lot about. In my meetings, formal meetings, you'll see that I met with the Whispering Green Homers Association, two members of the Homers Association came in, based on the proposal, wanted to voice their concerns. You know, same thing, law misconception that it was moving forward, that they, nobody was consulted in and that sort of thing. It was quite interesting because they talked about property values, they talked about a whole bunch of different things. And we got about halfway through the conversation and I encouraged them to actually meet with Henry and to have a further conversation about what the proposal is. And they said, well, it's just a trailer park. And I said, well, not, not really. I, I said, the vision that he shared with me is something very similar to what most of Whispering Creek Greens area people go spend six months in downtown. It's the Arizona Resort, you know, high end. And as soon as we said that that was a place that they stay, the tune kinda changed. But yeah, they, they, they're still not a hundred percent supportive of, of it. But I think that's the misunderstanding that's out there, is not understanding what this thing will be. And that's only for Henry to explain, because at this point, his proposal is for RV living and that's what's good. And so that led to, Henry had a meeting with the Homers Association as well. The feedback that I got from him, that it wasn't as successful as my meeting with them, I guess. And he said that he didn't feel like he had very good support at that, at that stage. And it's good to hear that you guys are hearing next as well throughout town. So one of the things I talked to Henry about was, even before the land use bylaw comes back to council for first reading and the public hearing, is I encouraged him to maybe consider doing a town hall, where if he brings his proposal and opens the door to the public and, and let people ask the questions. And again, if he does that, he's looking at it in the next couple of weeks, is to try to put something out when as soon as he gets back home. And we, you know, we can help him out with, you know, a retro lodge hall and that sort of thing. And the other thing he asked, would council be willing to, to support him, like come to the meeting and take part in those conversations so you can hear from him. And it will also help Henry gauge your guys' support as well, if he can hear your guys' comments as well. So that was where I kinda left it with him at the end of last week. He was, he wasn't, wasn't, he was discouraged at how the meeting went, but not completely discouraged about, about the proposal and just one wants to make, I think he recognized that getting that out there in the public and being able to answer those questions in, in a public forum is gonna be a little bit easier for him to, to try to reach several people instead of banging on doors, right?
Better to pull a bandage off now than have a public meeting.
Yeah, absolutely.
Let him talk about it, let him deal with it.
So letting you guys know that when that, when he does get that block, he'll request that, that as many council attend as they can. I told him from an administration standpoint, I would definitely be there to really tell the other side of what the questions you're getting about, how is the land zoning gonna, how's that process go? So that was, that was good. I met with the, the county, obviously, about the, about the industrial servicing. I also met with the Waste Authority Administrator, discussed the budget. And again, like I said, it was a, it was a shock when I got the budget, but it was also fortunate that we had already talked about rate increases, so it wasn't, it's not like we were in a really tough spot with it, it's just deviates the plan for a little bit. So various member, community members, obviously, the developer proposed lots of questions. Again, like I said, only one formal email from, from a resident that, and it was based on property value. Council concerns, obviously dealt with the record agreement questions and some procedural stuff that came up with that, with that discussion. And I was away on the thirtieth because of the daycare water line blew that you saw in Stu's report, so. Didn't, we didn't have childcare on that day. And on the twenty-ninth of March, I attended the TELUS and Alberta Government's New Generation ninety-one-one implementation, just to give background on, because we're gonna have to sign an agreement and then obviously FRESK is gonna look after that for us, so. But we, as the municipality, have to do the agreement with TELUS and four towns, so. Homers Association meeting and then Ag Society ad hoc committee. Those were my activities in the last two weeks.
So any questions for Kim? Hearing none, we'll move on to development, oh, yeah, Development Clerks report.
You have an MPC tomorrow. All permits out.
Okay. Any questions on that one? Okay, moving on to Public Clerks.
Stu mentioned that he's working to try to make sure that, he tried to make sure the Western Rec can be in before the pools start up to go through the deficiencies. They were in, Ward Brothers were in and did the floor repairs that were needed and, yeah. Well, it's snowing the other day, we talked about, pools start up.
Yeah, and Stu did phone me today and asked me if I would slip out and visit with him over the float, the things that we need to, and I think if you're reading Bonnie's report, that she, I'm not sure if he's got the information back yet. Stu just phoned me when I was on my way from Calgary on the way home and, and so I'll go out and visit with him on a few things that we need to do, the iron well on the float and then once we, here, Calgary Stampede and so.
The big one, the big one will probably be the seatbelts and how, how everybody rides or walks on and how the transition, I think that's the big one.
I think so too, and I think that we can address it, but there was other questions too. I'm not sure if it was Lorna or whether it was Georgia Lee that mentioned too, that sitting on the float, that maybe it would've been nice if we had a backrest. So Stu and I had come up with a method that we can make a backrest that would be, if nobody was sitting there, the back was, folds down. And when somebody's there, they have backrest and then the seatbelts would be there.
Seatbelts attached to the backrest.
So the advantage of it is that you'd only be able to sit where the backrest would be. So, you know, which strategically planned it so that you didn't cover the banner too. So, you know, you didn't sit where in front of the banner. But anyway, I'm not sure which one of the ladies mentioned that it would, you know, in a long float, it's would be nice if they had something to lean back to, council. So anyway, I'll talk to some of the other ones, like, that have been on the float and other things that we might need to do there. And then hopefully we'll hear back from the Calgary Stampede of what we need for their, they, they have the strictest regulations.
Yeah.
So anyway, anything else?
Big, big ones to note on there is, he's really looking at the asphalt prices right now, obviously because of the price of oil and that data. If it remains as high as it is, some of our patching will probably be put off till fall. And because of, we use the cold necks now, a lot of our patches, you know, it's not like they break down where we have giant holes in our road. We, we will have a gravel spot for possibly here, but Stu does his best to try to make sure that we get the asphalt because we are hauling it hot out of Leftbridge, so we, we try to get it when it's the best price, we wanted to be aware. And then the other one was the street sweeper. There was a couple of things that were, this was our, where we sent it up, Joe Johnson had it completely gone through and there was a couple of items that needed to hand. So that one line item, I gave you permission to go over a budget on that one line item. Obviously, well, the budget's not yet approved, it was still something that he was concerned about and, and overall, it's not gonna affect the, the equipment maintenance budget.
I have a question about the street cleaning. Do we, or do they have signs that they can put out to give notice to people? Because I know it depending upon weather and other things that are happening, you know, they may or may not. It just, I see people running out of their houses, jumping in their cars, trying to move their vehicles. I was just wondering if there was a better system?
We, we tried posting signs. The nice part is about the, the town of our size, is if everybody actually moved their cars, we could do the whole town in the afternoon, yeah.
Yeah, I was just wondering.
So what, so what we do is we've tried signage, we've actually threatened to tow people in the past before, all the things. And really, the best method we found was, there are people that will come up and they hear it, they'll come up and move their vehicle. If they don't, we'll get it the next time we go by. Because we own our street sweeper, unlike the communities that contract that service out and where they can only get it done once, we can actually take the street sweeper out after a parade and clean up some other spots. But we have very few places where there's vehicles that don't move when we're out. And the reason that we don't do the signs, because if you put the signs out, then that limits you to those two or three blocks that you can only do it a day. And they might, if everybody moved, we could be done that in a couple hours, you know, an hour and a half or two hours, so. It's, we tried the signs, I don't know how many times did I do that? It was a suggestion from council years ago, we did do it and it, we would, we would block off three blocks for the entire length and, and there was still people that didn't move. And then there was people that did and if, if it was a straight shot, we were done in an hour. And then all of a sudden, we had to wait till the next day to move everything over to give them a twenty-four hours notice and.
Yeah.
So it, it's honestly, it's more for the guys themselves that are actually running the machine. It's just, you get used to doing it that way and, and most of the home, the majority of homeowners are really good about it, because everybody wants a street sweeper and go for other else, so they'll go. Some people just move right out of the way and the next one will call Stu and say, hey, sorry, I wasn't home, saw the street sweeper went by. I'll get my car out of the way. When they're out the next day, they just. When they're out the next day, they just shoot by and they get up.
Yeah, I was just wondering if there was a system we could utilize that.
Yeah, we, we did try the signs. It was, it, it link, it actually slowed us down because it limited where we could be. So, yeah. And other than that, we had a, everything else is pretty straightforward to training with Rob inbound for the water, wastewater conference.
And for any, anybody on, one on the cemetery, we do have a policy that we will be moved to grave covers if the, if the family requests it. And so if you go up into the cemetery, you'll see a lot of the kind of tipping falling in. So a few years ago, council and Public Works came up with a suggestion that we want, you know, remove them if, if they're willing to let us remove them. And then they just fill it in with their grasses over. And so, so if you, when you see that, that's what that was over, is that we do have a policy on the grave covers. So.
If, if the covers get in very bad shape, we'll contact the last owner. If a family comes in and makes the request, we do it as quickly as possible.
Just so you have an idea of what that's about. Any other thoughts or questions on Stu's? Okay, if not, we'll move on to community services. So this is the one where Bonnie did mention in there about the float that she did to contact her weird.
Yeah, it's got it registered for the Calgary Stampede.
Yeah, it's one, sorry.
Just a couple of questions with this one. The mystery town venture scavenger hunt, what is that?
I'm gonna have to get you more information on that. It's a, it's a program that they were running for, I believe it's in partnership with tourism. It's just that way to get people to go around town. But I'll, I'll have to get more information on that if you want the, the actual program.
And then just another one down here. It's about the lesson conversion.
Yes.
Oh, no, sorry. It's about the community booking rentals.
Yes.
On May 2nd. Do we get enough rentals booked that the, like.
You only have to restrict to two. And that was based on last year because of COVID, we did private rentals. And there were certain people in our community that could never get in because some people booked multiple and didn't allow anybody to. So because we expanded, remember when we did the rates and fees bylaw, we expanded for those private bookings. We want to make sure that not one family is getting in on that at first day and booking up a whole bunch. So they're gonna limit it to two. And again, on the other side of that, if they're not being utilized, then they'll be opened up.
Right, sure.
Yeah, we're just making sure that one family didn't get.
Yeah.
The bulk of, whoever could be the first one on the computer.
It's nice to see. It doesn't say that in the guide, it starts at 9:00 A.M. It, it says here, bookings, pool bookings will begin at May 2nd at 9:00 A.M. Because my wife said, I guess we'll have to stay up until 12:01 to book in. Now I can tell her, too bad, we get to sleep in.
You get two days and it starts at nine?
Yeah.
Yes.
Any other questions or comments on Bonnie's?
The change from the one lessons to the other is gonna be a bit of a learning curve for a lot of people. Because we're not gonna find out until the bookings start. But a child in level, whatever, C is not a level C in the other. So we're hoping that there's enough information out there, but there will be lots of questions on that. I was one of them, what's a salamander now? Yeah.
Okay, anything else on Bonnie's? If not, we'll move on to the peace officers.
Gabby just also completed the I C S 300. So she's to the level where she can help out in the E O C if need be with, with our regional emergency management. And as we move forward, council will have to, we'll have to arrange a training for you guys for at least the ISWIC I C S 100. I don't know if you all have it, but it, it can be done online. And the last council did take to the 200 level. And now it's a couple of days, but it is worth, and it is legislated that all counselors have to take emergency management training. So we'll try to get that lined up. They're just trying to get their feet under them again to do intensive training. So I think this, this one for the 300 here at Vulcan was one of the first ones that they have done in person.
Yeah, there's, there's two levels higher than that I would recommend. I took the 400, but.
Did you?
Yeah.
It's a whole week, right?
Yeah. Mike Fedora and I took it together. It was, it was painful.
200 is painful.
Well, this 400 is really bad.
300 is not funny either.
It, if it wouldn't have been for Mike, I wouldn't have passed it. He, he, an instructor, really be awesome. He helped me through it to me because I, it was just way too much for me at the time. Anything, any questions on Gabby's? Okay, if not, somebody move the Barbara? Administration reports. Okay, discussion on Barbara's motion? Hearing that, I'll call the question of the favor. It's carried and answered. Okay, we need to move into in camera for the recreation under local public body conference, com- com- competences under Floyd Action Act, section 23. Can't speak today again. Need a motion to move. You will move this in camera? Any discussion?
8:36.
8:36 quiet.
I agree that this needs to be in camera. But there's certain aspects of the rec agreement that if we do go ahead with, that I will want some public input on before we commit to anything. I think it's part of the process that I need to have to make an informed decision, especially when it relates to something that I'm really torn on. So as this meeting goes, I will not, you know, I will definitely not talk about it. But I would also stress that we eventually talk about it with the general public before we go forward with anything.
And I think that was always the intent too, is I think that because this is a relationship that we have to have with the county, that we need to make sure that both the county and the town are on the same page before we go public on it. Because, you know, there is, there's some very strong feelings one way or the other. So I, but that's strictly my opinion. And that's partly why the county and the town have talked about always doing it in camera until we come up with a draft agreement that's acceptable to both.
Sure.
Parties, and then we can bring it out. But again, that's, you know, up to you guys. You know, that's partly why we try and make it so that it's, I guess you can be more vocal of your pros or cons and then on it. Whereas if you do it publicly and then it gets completely done in a different way. All that discussion was for, I think, too.
Sometimes when you put things out in public, people take it as gospel. Yeah. That's like a proposal for, for a recreational park.
Yeah. Yeah, so, but again, you know, it's up to you. Will has made the motion to go in camera. Any other questions on it before we call the question? Those in favor? It's carried and answered. So we will now officially.
Do you mind if I step over to second chair?
Two seconds.
You gotta go for a smoker, yeah?
No.